Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our reading today comes from Proverbs 24, "An honest answer is a true sign of friendship." And we have our dog this morning, Commissioner Kalo, the Dog Whisperer.
Come here. Come here. Yeah, you're a little bit shy. Our featured dog this week is a three to four-year-old female mixed breed, guessing a little bit of lab in her. She's a little bit skittish. She is our oldest resident. She's been with us for over two weeks. She's available for adoption now. She's in cage 19. How many dogs do we have total?
Thirty-three.
We have a total of thirty-three dogs, but this girl really needs a home. She's really easygoing, just a little bit scared, I think. So stop down and see us. Come on.
Someone please take her home.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cordez.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
(laughing). I do have a few personnel issues this morning, potential hires at the Collection Center. Also, I would like to discuss ongoing labor negotiations with United Steelworkers of America. I have an update on that for you, and the potential sale and/or purchase of real estate. All three topics will allow law under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so it asks at the conclusion of a regular board meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approving of the reading in the minutes of April 27th and May 4th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Award contract to Thicke and Crepe, Georgia, in the amount of $27,120 for the elevator maintenance and repair services for various county buildings. Four bids received, this being the most responsive compliant with specification, will be paid from the contract purchase service account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under workforce, serve as lead agency responsible for administering the Comprehensive Case Management Employment Program, effect of July 1st, 2016. Ohio Revice Code 305.190 of Amendment to House Bill 64 creates this program to provide employment, training, and other supportive services to mandatory and voluntary workers in their ages 16 through 24.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, let's talk about this a little bit, because we've been working on it for a few months, case management, workforce development, ODJFS that we have to have declared.
Sure, we can certainly do that. I've somewhat pushed this to the deadline.
Yeah, I know.
This is the last week. I wasn't, I didn't have a really comfortable place on this until recently. The guidance from the state came very late. They started talking about it long before the guidance came out, and they had everybody all agitated, and there was a lot of anxiety over it. Basically, a 10,000-foot look at it is that they're going to combine some of the services that are currently provided under TANF, to Job Family Services, and to workforce development through the WEOLA Act, and try to have a seamless approach to our delivery systems, specifically with youth. And I'll give you an example. We're doing a summer youth program this year. We have a contract from Job Family Services through TANF dollars. We've run it the last few years, very successful program, brings youth into the workplace, gives them some experience of how to be at work, how to get to work on time, how to dress at work, but it puts a little money in their pocket. And the other flip side is some of the employees get a little bit of labor, you know, help beat down their overhead. When it works right, it's very, very good for everybody involved. We will no longer have that program next summer, because when we combine TANF and WEOLA services, we'll have work experience programs throughout the year, not just summer youth TANF dollars. I expect that we'll have to hire a few program people to do some of this. I did talk with Longo about that. I don't, I don't think it's going to be too many problems, but, but it's going to be a learning curve in how we're going to deliver these services. And of course, we're still now just digesting the WEOLA Act. And I'll give you an example. One of the, one of the things is that the state has requested waivers similar to the ones they had under WEER with regard to how we deliver services, and the Department of Labor has yet to respond to those waivers. So we're kind of in this middle area. We don't want to stop what we're doing, because we think the waiver's going to be approved, but the waivers haven't been approved as of yet. And WEOLA came into existence quite a while back. You would think that they were dealing with this stuff quickly. The guidance has been slow, the responses have been slow, and then on top of that, we're still, and we can't lose sight of this issue. We're still uncertain as to when the state's going to come back and once again try to combine the workforce development areas. What does that have to do with the combining of the comprehensive case management that we're looking at? Well, it could be a problem if we're combined and we're in a tri-county or quad-county whip board under WEOLA, and we're trying to figure out what's the best delivery method within our own community for these type of services. So I did, I did ask this question, and I received a response I think is suitable for us. We can move this back, should we decide that it's no longer best placed with the workforce development system that may not be controlled locally. And we can move it back to Job Family Services at that time.
Okay, they did give us that clarification, then.
So they're saying, but who, you know how these things go.
Oh, history on it.
Right.
When we spent a year, they were trying to break up Area 7 and combine us with other people with no suggestions. Area 7 fought that, they won it.
Sure. I really, I really think that Area 7 is going to be under assault this summer again. One of the requirements under WEOLA is that you have a regional approach to the delivery of workforce development services. Doesn't say you have to have a regional workforce, workforce investment board, the whip board, but it does say you have to have some regional elements in your plan. As you know, we had the consultants meet with you. We're working on a regional plan with six, six counties. I'm comfortable that, that some of the things that are low-hanging fruit, we can get agreement on access forms, the levels of service that are going to be delivered. So we're working on that regional plan to deliver those services. I have no clue how Area 7 is going to have a regional plan from Appalachia all the way to Lucas County. It's, it's, it's a huge area. They've done a good job. Let me not, let me not say that I don't, I think Area 7's done a great job. I think the leadership in Area 7 has been fantastic. To hold such a large area together and still provide services within that takes a great deal of, of application of leadership, and, and they've, they've managed well. But the state is bound and determined that they're going to fracture Area 7 into smaller areas, and at that point, they'll be looking at Area 11, Area 4, not so much Cuyahoga, but...
When we talk about the areas.
Area, area...
Area 7 is 44 counties across the state.
Correct.
It'd go from the north, from the lake, all the way down to Appalachian, around a hook through Columbus, where Area 4 and Area 11 are Lorraine County standalone, Lake County standalone.
Correct. And, and there's very few of these standalones left. Lake County's in a similar position than we are. They're, they're bordered by very rural counties to the south and to the east, and of course, the behemoths to their, to their west. Well, the behemoths to our east, and we're bordered on our west by very rural counties. So their predicament is very similar to ours with regard to logistically, how does it fit together to deliver services, and where the, where the design elements are going to be for what we concentrate on with the limited dollars that we have. And so it's not, you can see why Lake County and Lorraine County have been separate workforce development areas over a long period of time, where, and Medina is leaning towards Stark Summit area down there, because Stark and Summit have been together for, for a while now. All of that's going to be in scramble again this summer. Now, now the good thing is even if they're successful with Area 7, because I think under WEOLA, they cannot meet that regional approach. I see the state using that as a way to, to at least break it into a couple different sections. We still have met all of our matrix. The one thing we have to have under the WEOLA regulation is we have to have that regional plan, that regional cooperative. That's why we're working so hard, and that's why we brought those folks in to meet with you, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to achieve that. If we don't achieve that, then we will be under assault and trying to disband our, our individual area and how we deliver services to our community. So there's a lot to come, but I'm comfortable, at least right now, with the answer I received with regard to the Comprehensive Case Management, that we could move it again in the future should the environment change to a level that we're unsatisfied with. And Mike Longo, myself, and a few other people, we've got a lot of work to do on this, because you've got to get it up and running and moving pretty, pretty quickly.
What's nice about the program, though, is the ability to use the flexible TANF dollars and to make it a year-round program versus just a summer youth. So as we transition into it, it might give us more opportunities, hopefully. I think that's the intent. It's our discussions at the state level.
It may, Commissioner, but you know, there's the, a couple of things have happened, and you're aware of that, we have to provide, you know, work, you know, work for some of the TANF recipients, and so there's, there's those, there's those requirements. There's also the big stir over what's going on with some of the Medicaid now, with, with whether there's going to be a fee, not a fee, whether those people actually have to engage in a, in a work program. And you, if you recall, we're setting up that building in a building, and, and Job Family Services has contracted with an outside vendor to bring work so that we can bring folks that are, that are receiving benefits now into a work environment. So it's, it's a pretty good collaboration going on, on with that. I'm very hopeful that it works. We've taken a leap of faith through the Port Authority, because we're doing that build-out, and the ROI on that build-out for the facility is three years. So this has got to work, or we're going to lose money on this. You know, after that, we'll be able to reduce the overhead, maybe, you know, deal with a few more people. I, you know, the direction they're heading in is, is really complicated, and Job Family Services has been overwhelmed. They, with the Medicaid expansion and the requirements that they're dealing with right now, those, those people are really, really, they're, they're working desperately over there, and the call, the call, software, call center software hasn't produced very well. There's been problems with the, the case software, and, and I got to give, I got to give them credit. They've been working through this. We get the complaints occasionally from the community. Mostly, it's a timing thing, or the getting back to them thing, and it's not really their fault. It's, it's part of the, the tools that they're forced to use over there have not been as agreeable as, as I think they should be to deliver a really good product to, to the community. So I'm encouraged by this, and that's another reason why, after, you know, careful consideration, not having the Comprehensive Case Management in Job Family Services, because there was only two options, Job Family Services and Workforce Development, I think at this time they have their hands full. And, and, and it's more a workforce development issue, but should you decide later on, I believe you may want to reevaluate this, and you know, every once in a while, make sure that's the best way to go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, participate in the O.D.R.O.D.SALT agreement for the 1617 season.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I have no further comment this morning, thank you.
Ms. Rannus?
I do have two updates regarding pending litigation I would like to discuss with the Board in executive session.
Commissioners, report.
Okay. Last Wednesday, I went to Mexico Mutual. They had an event in honor of Cinco de Mayo. I enjoyed the people there, and the food was wonderful. From there, we all attended an event, the Firefish and Lorraine County Historical Society presented at the newly renovated Carnegie Center on West 10th Street in Lorraine, and I had not had an opportunity to see that building, and it was very well done, the renovations there, really cool artifacts from the city of Lorraine. They put out on an outstanding graphic show. They had video projection by an artist named Kevin Jackson to the music of a Grammy-winning pianist, whose name was Angela Chang, and it was really nicely done. Tuesday morning, I did the welcome at our Transportation Center for the launch of the ACT Work Ready Communities Initiative, and that is a tool for employers that they can use to help with their hiring practices. We had a decent turnout, about 80, would you say?
We had about, about 80, well, we had about 80 different entities represented, maybe a few more people.
Yeah. And it's, it helps the employers know that the workforce development is there to help them find qualified candidates to fill jobs at their company, so...
Do you want me to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, it's a cost savings for them, too, so...
You know, under the, under the, the job ready, ready program, what we're doing is we're partnering with entities such as Lorraine Community College, the Joint Vocational School. The ACT is not new, the, the, the skills assessments are not new, but they're new to our community, although JVS has been using something similar for, for quite a while. What they do is they go in and they evaluate your jobs for a potential employer, and they will give them certain points on, on, on the assessment. When we have candidates come in looking for employment, we have, now have testing tools that we give to the candidates, and they can be certified. And I, I was a little surprised at the certification levels they were using. They had bronze, silver, or platinum. I, I don't like that, that piece myself, because somebody may be a bronze, and that's, that's what they ought to be X, that's their career. It kind of says that they should be a platinum, but maybe they just need to be a bronze with, with those scores. However, that's their, their thing. But they'll assess them in several categories, assign points to their skill sets, and then you take the jobs, and you take the sales, skill sets of the potential applicant pool, and you match them, and you send applicants to be interviewed by a company that are very closely matched with the skills that are required by the job and the skills that the employees have demonstrated through testing. Theoretically, and the statistical data is there in these communities that are more mature using the ACT tools, theoretically, your recruitment process timeframes decrease, your turnaround on getting applicants in the job decreases, the people that are successfully complete and stay on with the company is higher, so it drives down costs to the company and the business. Drives, also drives down the frustration of applicants who think they can do the job, may not be able to do the job, so they, they're in and out of jobs, they lose hope, they lose faith. So we need to align skills with jobs more closely. It'll benefit businesses, and it'll definitely benefit the work, the workforce. But we have a lot to do going forward, and we have one more set of trainings that we're sending all of our folks to, to do this, and then it's getting the businesses to come in and work with us, and letting us assess their jobs, and then sending them applicants, basically being the front office on the recruitment process. They don't have to hire those applicants, because they may want to do, I'll give you an example. We say they're good in math, they're good in research, they're good in XXX, and that aligns well with this job, but they still may want to do, a lot of businesses do personality testing, they do a few other things. They can still do those things, and they can still select from amongst those candidates. But what they're going to be selecting from is a very well-positioned pool of people with the basic job skills to be successful.
Or the aptitude to acquire the job skills.
Exactly.
Actually, to tie into that, because I've had a speaker, Mike Longo, yesterday, Director of Workforce Development, and I've sent two companies in the past three weeks, because when we're off and about, everybody complains about workforce, and one has already taken one of our constituents.
Yes.
And then another is going through the interview process, hoping to fill up, and they think they've found a candidate for that business also.
Well, if you remember...
And they're not gigantic hireings, but we take them one or two at a time, if they're successful.
You know, when a pebble starts on top of Mount Everest, it usually ends up being a landslide. So, you know, they start that roll, hopefully it'll pick up that kind of momentum. You know, interestingly, on the Ohio Means Jobs website, as you saw yesterday in the presentation, there is a section for those skill points, because they're doing skills assessments there also. It's going to take time, and I'm really hopeful that we commit to this, not just in Lorraine County, but around the state. We're a one-off, as you know. We're isolated in northeast Ohio, we're the only county doing it up here right now. The state is pushing this type of, of assessment tool, so it's going to take more people getting on board. Now, we'll suggest that those other communities may be using something different, everybody's got different assessment tools. But we're trying to get ACT to be the normally accepted method, so that's one of those regional approaches that we're talking about. But without employers getting involved, it's not going to work. And we have to do that outreach, and they have to want to reach back to us to assess and make those, make those qualifications known. I'm encouraged, but, but it's, it's an uphill battle. But recruitment costs are very high. I was out, you know, visiting a company that indicated that over three years, they felt they had lost a half a million dollars because of employee turnover, not being able to successfully do the job, even though they evaluated their history and, and did some backgrounds on them, and it looked like they had transferable skills. And let me put the other twist in there, also transportation issues. Well, we're trying to overcome one barrier at a time. We're still not, we still got to deal with the transportation issue in Lorraine County, but we're trying to overcome the barrier of them having to, you know, go through a stack of applicants this high, and, and trying to figure out which ones will be successful and not. That's real economic loss to a business. And as I said earlier, though, I don't want to be dismissive to the people wanting jobs. It's very discouraging to those folks to get into a job and then not be able to be successful at that job. We have, we have to break that down somehow and do a better, better, better way of aligning those two things. It's going to be good for this community, and I would encourage you to talk more out there about it. Again, let me say, without businesses coming and working with us, we really got, we got all the tools in the world, we have no place to dig any holes.
I think it's solid about word of mouth, too. If a company's using this resource and it's working for their company, hopefully they'll tell the next company. Unfortunately, the business that was supposed to be there yesterday to talk about how it did work for them was unable to make it, so I think that'll help a lot.
Well, we're going to do more. I want to do another session in a few months, try to get businesses come forward. But word of mouth is, is, is key and paramount. Another thing I want to do is I want, I want to get this out. You noticed that we had Dawn Calvert from T-Maine County, we, we've, she had been going to the ACT training, too, because when she's out working with businesses, she can talk up the workforce development tools. Workforce development is integral to economic development, and economic development is integral to workforce development. We adopted that position long before it became really cool to do so with the state going forward. When companies want to come here, and we get people that are saying, "Well, we're thinking of locating Lorraine County," they want to know about your workforce. How qualified is your workforce? How ready is your workforce? If they need 50 jobs, they want to know that there's 50 people somewhat available from a pool that may be successful at this job. With these tools, when we assess their jobs, when they're thinking about coming here, we can go back to our files, and we can look and say, "We have 100 people that at least meet the aptitude of the, of the jobs that you're looking for that may be successful." And we can send you a pool of 50 or 80 applicants that you can sort through to find employees quickly that may be successful in your employment opportunities.
I think another outreach, I would like to be able to hire a couple, hire a couple of people who are just liaisons out to the business, setting up meetings. I think we've really got to participate more in the business after hours, setting up tables with the Chamber of Commerce, where you get, you know, 25 or 30 businesses in a room.
And we have a presence there, you know...
I know we have a presence. I mean, I'm on the board of the chamber, but I'm saying, I think we need to do a little bit more of an effort now that we have the ACT working together.
The, and I'm agreeing with you 100%. That's why the Chamber of Commerce is an ACT partner with us.
I know they are, right.
And it, what we're trying to do is not getting somebody else's gotten.
Right.
So T-Maine County's working with, with their investors, the Chamber's working with their investors. If we put too many people talking about the same thing and talking to the same people, they get mad.
I'm just saying, at the business after hours, with the tables they have there, vendors, you could be there and actually...
Sure.
Talking to the businesses as they're socializing and networking, and maybe get some more signed up to at least get an attempt to get in their businesses to assess any of their workforce needs.
We will, we will do an outreach program.
We need a larger social media program on that. I was trying to go, our Lorraine County, Ohio Means Jobs doesn't have a Facebook page, it doesn't have. Where are other ones in the state? I've spent a lot of time on this, because I've worked with other commissioners across the state on this whole issue.
Well, hopefully you can get them to adopt ACT, too. It would have been nice if other communities had gone ACT, but regardless of their assessment tool, as long as they have an assessment tool, but we should try to align those things with the other communities.
There'll be discussion points. We're just up and running on it now, since we've been here for a couple of months, so I hope to. I was just waiting to see what the presentation looked like. Seven out talking about it, and we've had a couple of hits on it.
Well, we had somebody come in, get assessed earlier in the week, and they came up platinum, saying, "We need a platinum job," so...
There you go.
I'm afraid to take the assessment, myself.
What's below bronze?
Well, bronze minus, you know.
But that's always been the challenge, is that the business leaders are so busy running their businesses, to get them to come forward and identify the skills needs. And the most important thing is when they knew, know that their company's creating new positions and what skills go along with that, identifying those early enough.
Well, let me capitalize upon that opening. This tool can also be used by companies to examine their present workforce and find deficiencies that are stopping people from, from increasing their, their ability to help the company, or to assess the skills that may be necessary, why people aren't advancing in the company, and then to fill that, that gap with, with training. We have OJT dollars, we have other, other abilities to assist. Another frustrating thing to, to employees or workforce is their inability to move along a continuum of growth in, in an organization. You'd be surprised the amount of turnover that occurs, because people are dissatisfied that they're not improving themselves. Now, not every company can grow, or, and not everybody can have an opportunity at the same company to grow. We routinely graduate people from here, because we don't have a great ladder, career ladder choices here. But we're very happy about that when they go on to other successful jobs. And then we become miserable, because we have a learning curve with some new people coming in. But there is opportunity in some of these companies for growth for people, and they're not growing. And this, this assessment could help them understand why they're not.
Sure. Agreed.
And lastly, yesterday, I went up to the 5th floor and judged the coloring contest for the calendar for 2017. A lot of great, I think we had eight, eight or 900 submissions, so they narrowed it down. I didn't have to look at all, all of those, so, but I did have to select some, so you'll be seeing that here shortly.
That was a solid waste, Commissioner?
Solid waste, yeah.
Yes, solid waste.
Yeah. End of my report.
Yeah, busy week, on top of the other things that Commissioner Koski mentioned. Former Governor Strickland was in town on Monday discussing at the local 1104 Steelworkers
Former Governor Strickland was in town on Monday discussing at the local 1104 Steelworkers' Hall about the issues pertaining to currency manipulation and foreign steel and what it's done to our industry. Again, Tom Kelling was there, the gentleman we had here, discussing bailout opportunities. He was very thankful that we had sent a letter to the President, a resolution in support of his discussion points. Also had some discussion with some steelworkers that have been going through our workforce development.
During that rapid response?
Yeah, some of the disconnects, different ages of workers and their past experiences. So some things, I think, just are part of the whole process, and there's such an influx of...
Well, you know what's happening, Commissioner? And we've been down this road a few years back. The unfortunate situation is the level of compensation in any future position for folks that come out of a heavy smokestack industry is going to be significantly less. And having them, in their mind, make that transition has been very, very difficult. Truth is, we've known for two decades that we have not been able to replace the high-paying, older manufacturing, smokestack manufacturing jobs with anything similar. And we're not alone. So before somebody goes, "You guys ain't done your job," all they got to do is look at all the communities along the Great Lakes, from Chicago all the way to New York. Most of those older industries have left for the Sun Belt to areas where labor is less costly or more abundant, they're closer to their resources, they don't have the manufacturing problems, and they have year-round seasonal weather. Whatever it is, we're not alone, and Lorain County is not unique under that problem.
That's the entire Rust Belt area that's having those issues in regards to replacing same-wage jobs.
Right. And so getting them to understand that, at this point in their life, if they want to continue working, and a lot of them need to, they're not... People think of them as old people that already retired, a lot of them are not. Getting them into employment that works for them is challenging enough, but getting them to understand that they're probably not going to make the money they did before is also a very hard task.
And then Commissioner Lane, I did Cinco de Mayo Parade also on Saturday. Very good turnout. Congratulations, Mexi Mitchell, putting together about 90 units.
You hit anybody with candy?
No.
Or he used to.
Miss used to. Okay, end of my report.
I want to continue to commend the members of Move, the Mobility Opportunity for a Vibrant Economy. They continue to meet to grow community support for transit here in Lorain County. Had a chance with my colleagues to attend the Firefish Art Song at the Carnegie Center, which if you haven't had a chance to visit that, you should. And if you missed the art song, wow, you missed a very, very impressive evening. And I know I was talking with Commissioner Kayla about Angeline Chang and her Grammy Award-winning pianist, just talking about that amazing performance that she had put on. And I want to remind everybody, Firefish coming up September 17th, so mark that down as a save date, 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in Lorain, and looking forward to that one. If you missed last year's event, wow, you missed a really great event, and you'll really enjoy it, I'm sure, this year. Also attended the wake there for Minnie Wade, who was always very helpful to me all these years, and just a dynamic lady and very much missed in the community. The Lorain County Community Alliance met on Friday, and I want to thank Bill Holtzman for his service as the outgoing president of that group. I've been asked to serve in the capacity of president for Lorain County Community Alliance, and looking forward to working together with the rest of the team there. Vice President Dave Gillock and Mike Musto are treasurer, and Patty Echo is secretary for that group. So we'll be talking about some things in the weeks and months ahead, coming out with Lorain County Community Alliance. The Cinco de Mayo Parade went very well, good turnout for that. Everybody kept thinking, "It's going to rain, it's going to rain, it's going to rain." And the good Lord held off the showers, and we had a nice parade there and a nice event. It was good seeing former Governor Ted Strickland over at the Steelworkers' Hall there. Certainly, more and more people will need to understand what's going on with this foreign steel that's having, just as we all know here in Lorain County, a very negative impact on the economic future of a lot of families here. And it certainly would be nice, as I've said before, if the auto industry would make a strong commitment to buying U.S. steel for their products across the board. That would help out tremendously. And Lakefront Lorain County, we had a very productive meeting the other day with the lakefront communities as we look at generating more economic activity and tourism-type activity along the lakefront. And we are eagerly awaiting the final word, hopefully in June, on a planning grant for the lakefront. Also awaiting the final word on a planning grant concerning a transit plan for the county. That completes my report.
If you're looking for any topics for the alliance, I'm not sure when your next event will be, but maybe talking about stormwater and what we're doing in our stormwater district may be a topic of interest for the community to suggest.
Yeah, we did mention that at the meeting, that we're going to be soliciting community leaders and governmental leaders to come back with ideas and discussions they'd like to see us holding as a community alliance. And we're really unique in Lorain County. I know when I was in the legislature and I would explain the community alliance to my colleagues, they kind of shook their heads. They just couldn't believe that municipalities, townships, and all these governmental leaders were actually coming together to work on initiatives. And so we will be soliciting feedback from governmental leaders to see what they'd like to be talking about in the months and years ahead.
Today at 11 o'clock, TID will meet. Next Tuesday at 9:30, we'll have a Law Road vacation hearing, and then 10 o'clock, the King Mobile Pitch hearing. Board correspondents?
I move to approve the board correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Kosky?
Hi.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to participate in public comment this morning? Okay. Nope. Seeing no one wishing to participate in public comment, I would move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues outlined by the county administrator and legal issues that were outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Kosky?
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
We load up an 18-foot trailer. Then we have the task of hauling everything out of the trailer and taking it into the gymnasium, or lunchroom, or whatever large multipurpose room they have for us. We're generally there for the whole day. If we're going to be back at the school the next day, we can leave our equipment still set up. If we're going to be at a different school the next day, then we have the job of removing it from the multipurpose room and taking it back to the trailer, loading up the trailer, and locking it up and calling it quits for the day. It started in January 2007 with CERTS, which is Safe Routes to School. And Tim had an idea, developed the Safety Star Program. It has escalated to the point where, as of this year's date, we have seen 38,000 students in Lorain County.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorain County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that, quite frankly, shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorain County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce.
We bring safety to the school. We're self-contained. We have all the mock simulations of scenarios, such as busy intersections. We have all the roads, movie screens, our audio/video system, streets, sidewalks, grass, working traffic signals, working railroad signals. And we bring that all to the school so the student does not have to leave. To make sure that all the lights bulbs are working. And that all the audio/video equipment is up and running, we then put on the program. We put together a dynamite program with a lot of positivity. We're very animated. The students enjoy it while they're learning an important rule about safety. When we ask questions, we ask for group participation. It's never just one student answering the question, it's everybody answering the question together.
Are you ready?
Yeah!
Teachers included. We make learning fun for everybody. We show two short films. One is Willie the Whistle. And Willie the Whistle teaches kids in a simple format, the correct way to walk with parents, aunt or uncles, or any other family members that are responsible, adults, to cross streets where there are no stop signs, or where it's just stop signs and no traffic lights, and to cross streets where there are parked cars, what to look for, when to cross, when there are cars parked along the sides of the street. And again, it's all basically looking left, right, and left. When the short film is over, we generally teach from what the kids just watched. And those are the scenarios, then we go over with our mock setup. We go over basically what the video has just gone over. And then we let the kids apply what they just learned to doing it in real life, to our mock simulation that we have in the room that we are performing in. Everybody leaves at the end of our program with a great feeling, knowing that all they have to do is look left, right, and left again, and they're going to be smiling for a good, long time. I would highly recommend this program to all administrative principals in every school system. And it's a very good program. I believe in it 100%. I've had students see me at the mall, or see me at a carnival or a festival, and come up and say, "I remember you. You're the safety guy. You're Mr. Neal." And the first question I ask them, "What are the three ways you look before you cross the street?" This could be the year after we saw them, and they always say, "Left, right, and left again," and they say it with a smile. So I know our program works.
Because you did a good job today, at the end of the day, you're going to get to go home with the yellow Safety Star bag.
Ah, the fun part. The students get to take home their surprise at the end of the day, which is the yellow Safety Star bag. And inside that bag are some neat things about pedestrian safety. We have the pedestrian safety flashcards. They also will get the Safety Star Certificate of Participation, which has their school name on it and the date. And we like to let the kids know that that's something that they can take home and hang on their refrigerator, they can hang on their bedroom door, or they can have their parents put it in a scrapbook for them. Their parents will receive some information, such as the top 10 safety tips for adults, because even as adults, we need to refresh our memories on safety. They, as students, will receive the top 10 Safety Star tips for students. They will also receive a Safety Star maze for those that are a little bit more adventurous and like a challenge. We also offer a safety coloring sheet. And there are some other things in the bag, but the things the kids like the most is the Safety Star pencil. And that's a pencil that changes colors when you touch it. And with that pencil comes the Safety Star Eraser, which is a yellow eraser shaped like a star, and it says "Safety Star" on it. We need 40-foot by 40-foot area, electrical accessibility, and a way to turn off and on the main lights of the room for our movies that we show. The smallest class we've done is 15 students, the largest class is 60. So usually, the classes range from 23 to 25 students per class. There are occasions where the school has to schedule two classes at a time. We're very flexible. We do have the ability to fit into smaller rooms, so we pretty much will accommodate to what they can offer. I would highly recommend this program to all principals in every school system. At the end of the day, I feel very, very good. I'm excited that I know that kids are going to practice what they've learned, and I can go home and sleep good at night, knowing that those children are going to get to school safely, they're going to get home safely, they're going to be smiling, and their parents are going to be smiling because everybody is safe.
It's easy to start, and it's painful to stop.
Prescription drugs are prescription for a reason. If you take too many of a prescription narcotic, you die.
Chelsea was very well-liked by her friends and by her teachers.
Ronnie was going down to Tennessee State to be the next player to come out of Tennessee State.
Joey was extremely popular, just surrounded by friends.
Mark was an athletic, fit-looking kid.
Aaron enjoyed talking and debating with any and all people.
The prescription pain pill problem is a huge epidemic.
This is an epidemic.
This is an epidemic that has infiltrated our young people.
We never had a conversation with Joey about prescription drugs because we truly had no idea that there was any kind of recreational use going on.
The first time I started doing painkillers was when I was 17.
I would steal pills from my friend's mom. Her stepmom had script for Vicodin, that was like heaven. I went in her room and stole Vicodin every day.
He would ask to use the bathroom in other people's homes, and he'd go in there and go in their medicine cabinets and steal prescription drugs.
These medications are available everywhere in every socioeconomic environment.
Ronnie was a starting hat-back, one of our best players. He had several scholarship offers.
Ronnie was very popular in the neighborhood.
Ronnie was a neat freak, clean freak, always had his hair braided. When he got into the pill use, his mood changed. He changed like, was that Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde?
Ronnie's appearance really deteriorated, and it was really unlike him.
I said, "Are you doing drugs?" And my son looked at me with these eyes of, "How could you even think of that, Mom?"
I was walking up to football practice. My coach was walking towards me, he just had this crazy look on his face. He goes, "You think they might have found your brother?" And I was like, to me, I was like goof, and I was like, "I didn't know he went missing." So I was like trying, making him like goofing off. And he was like, "No, Justin, seriously, they, he might have found his body." And I was like, "Wait a minute." I was like, "Whoa, what?" He's like, "Yeah, they found, they discovered a body in an apartment in Telford."
I never thought my son would take prescription drugs without a prescription.
Parents often trip themselves up by asking a simple question, "Are you using drugs?" No. One has to be able to say, "I'm seeing some signs here that concern me."
He was a little bit more argumentative. We thought that was maybe hormones.
The person has what we call pinpoint pupils. Literally, the pupils look like a pinpoint.
She slept odd hours.
We didn't know why he was sleeping so late.
If I wasn't able to get high, then I didn't want to get out of bed because, you know, the physical withdrawals.
We were missing tinfoil from the kitchen, missing spoons.
We'd find the pens that were cut in half.
Straws.
There were a lot of charges coming on the credit cards.
We thought that there was somebody stealing money out of our account.
That's probably a pretty good clue, there's something going on.
Joey was pretty upset with his roommates, they were spending all their money on medication. Had I known that the medications that they were taking were so dangerous, I would have told them, "You're not even going back to that place."
If you feel something's going on, you got to investigate.
I thought it was just a phase. We partied when we were in high school, and it's just sort of a phase you go through as you experience life, and you grow out of it. And I thought he was on that track.
Joey had been found, and he was unconscious.
He had all these medications that he had just received from this doctor. More than likely, he crushed and snorted it. We're just being completely hit blindly by, you know, a situation we had absolutely no understanding of and no notice of. And in the meantime, my husband's in the house, I'm out front in the front of the house just, you know, wondering what we're dealing with here. And so finally Joe just came out and said, "He's gone."
I was downstairs getting ready for work. Cookie told me she couldn't get Mark up. Mark was powerful and had the nickname, in some circles, of Tank. I reminded her that what she had to do was get a cup of water and splash him with it and stay out of his way. And she told me it was different. We found a clear plastic bag of loose pills. I'm not sure if he even thought he was doing drugs, and I know that sounds crazy, but it's not like it was heroin or cocaine. We followed the ambulance to the hospital. A few minutes later, someone came in and told us that Mark was dead. We never thought that was a possibility.
I had no idea that kids were abusing medicine.
I came home one night, saw the basement light on, and went up to the window, and my son was crushing and snorting the pills.
We would find pills in the shoes, in the jackets that are hanging in the closet in the pockets.
I found some pills hidden under his cushion.
They were in his socks. I never checked my kid's socks.
He took the light switch plate off and put them in there.
Look everywhere. Is it an evasion? No, you're doing the right thing as a parent.
I would question Chelsea, and she would always assure me that everything is fine and nothing's wrong. and nothing's wrong.
Kids don't want to get in trouble, so they're going to tell you exactly what you want to hear.
There was always something down, deep inside, that said to me, something's wrong. You doubt yourself because you wonder if you're making a bigger deal out of something.
You know, maybe deep down, my parents knew that I was high.
You can't always believe your child. Their lies get bigger when they're trying to hide substance abuse.
I knew her inside and out. And I remember Chelsea as the little girl that she used to be.
I looked at him, and I only saw the most beautiful son in the world.
It was very difficult to think that she would be lying to me, which she was. She was out using and abusing prescription drugs.
Long-acting agents like oxycontin are meant to be delivered in the body over a period of hours, if not a day. If they're chewed, crushed, and snorted, you get the entire dose at one blast, and if the body's not ready to accommodate that, you will stop breathing.
We needed to call the police. But what are the neighbors going to think?
Put all of that aside and focus on what's important, as difficult as it may be.
Families can't get too caught up in the idea that, oh, there may be an arrest, charge on my son or daughter, they could be in jail, they could be in the morgue.
The law saved my life. If my mom hadn't called the cops on me, I don't know where I would be right now.
It was the most difficult thing to do, to call the police on your, on your own child. It was horrible. I have gone from putting importance on things like, what college are you going to get into, to just celebrating the fact that she's alive today. She's doing very well. She's clean and sober. She's productive. She's sweet. And I have her back, and I'm thankful. And it's wonderful.
Aaron had spent the night at a friend's, and they found him blue and non-responsive. They took him to a local hospital.
He was using Vicodin, which we found out through his toxicology, what was in his blood system.
I witnessed him have two heart attacks in ICU. He had staph, he had pneumonia, he went through seizures. The doctor was explaining to us that he was going to die. We held his hands on each side, and we started crying. And he just laid there.
People use the medications in an abusive way, not knowing what the full consequences are, and somebody ends up here.
Within 24 hours, Aaron had opened his eyes.
Parents are the first line of defense in terms of prescription drug abuse.
You got to sit your kids down. You just got to tell them about the severity of the problem.
There's a number of steps that you can take.
Educate your child and yourself very early.
Anybody who feels that this can't happen to my child.
It could happen to your kid.
Make sure that you don't have excess pills in your home.
Keep your medication locked up because you're never going to notice if something's gone.
What my mom does is she has these take-home pee tests that I got to take. No, I want to keep my mom proud of me, and I don't want to let her down.
You need to have the conversation with them about drug and substance abuse. And you need to include prescription drugs and guide them so they're able to get through their high school years and into college and through their college years drug-free. Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation.